We are live. Just waiting for the top of the hour. All right, it's seven o'clock. We will call the city, special city council committee of the whole meeting to order. Please join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Alderwoman Haddeline.
Present.
Flat Miller.
Here.
Lobley.
Here.
Holflick.
Here.
Lancaster.
Here.
Crete.
Here.
Perkins.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you. Item number three is for authorizing a council member to attend electronically. We are all present, so we do not need to make that authorization. Moving on to item number four is public comment. Is there any item or anyone in the public that wishes to address city council for any item on the agenda? Hearing none, we move on to item number five, which is discussion action on department director structure for parks, community development, and economic development. And I'll ask our city administrator if you could bring together what, you know, our plan is and what your vision is for these positions within your organization.
Okay, so I provided in the packet a analysis of the thought process and how these two positions were developed. This comes from the last six months of working with these departments and trying to assess where the needs are and what kind of roles these positions will be taking on and having a whole different perspective in doing that over the last six months and a hands-on perspective that I've never had before. So I'm going to start with the Parks and Recreation Department. For years, that department has been primarily maintenance of the parks. The recreation has consisted of our basketball program and our pool. Not without trying, we've tried to build the recreation over the years. And in the past year or so, a little bit longer, we've done an extensive addition to the offerings of our recreational programs, not only in the area of sports, but also trying to bring in some arts and culture and some different activities for the community. We've been somewhat successful with some of those programs, but for the most part, the majority of those programs have either been very low attended, or we've received no attendance at all, and we've had to cancel those programs. In looking at it a little closer this summer, what we found is that some of our programs, actually quite a few of our programs are being duplicated. These are programs that are also being offered by the library. Some of them are being offered by the senior center, and some of them are being offered through other organizations within the community. So once we started looking at that, we started considering a possible partnership with the library in that we could work together so that the programs weren't necessarily duplicated, but perhaps there was an opportunity for the city to be able to help promote those programs. The library would host those programs and manage them, and then the city could use some of our recreation funding to help fund some of those programs. We met with Karen Sutera, who was very receptive to that idea. Her and Joe actually worked a little bit over the summer to try to get some of these ideas moving forward. I think she's talked to the board a bit about it as well. And so that process has been started. However, we haven't fully engaged in that because obviously next year when we go to budget, we'll be talking about that further as far as the funding that we'll be requesting to apply through the parks fund for that recreation. So regarding that portion of the job structure for the community engagement director, what that would look like then is this person, this position would maintain the management of our basketball program and our pool operations from the staffing side, and also continue to participate in the senior center board, in the NISRA board, which are all things that are related to parks and recreation that the city sponsors. We found that as much as we've tried to promote it, the community right now doesn't seem to want to move forward with a rec center. A rec center requires a lot of work and a lot of funding, not only to build, but also to sustain. And in order to do that, we have to have the programs and the revenue stream to do that. It's not off the table, but as far as in the near future, we have a lot of work to do before we get there. In the meantime, I don't think we should abandon the recreation and the arts and cultural role as far as what the city sponsors. This community engagement position would be able to help maintain that as far as encouraging the partnerships and doing what the city's portion of that work would be to keep moving forward in that regard. Any questions about? I don't want to move too fast because there's a lot of moving parts here, so. No? Okay. So at the same time, when we're looking at the community development, community and economic development department, as you all know, we had Donovan Day in the role of director there, and he was essentially serving two roles. Previously, before he came to the city, the position was predominantly building and zoning with little economic development at all. That was primarily handled through the city administrator's office. However, we also didn't have a lot going on at that time. In fact, prior to 2022, I believe, from 2017 to 2022, we only built seven houses in that time. Since 2022, we've had over 60 houses and seven or eight new businesses. So the need for that department as far as the economic development, as well as the building and zoning, has increased dramatically. And Donovan's role was primarily more geared towards economic development when he was hired, with the idea that we would maintain the outsourcing. In his absence, when Anne was working through the transition between Steve Santler and Donovan, we outsourced with some building inspection and plan review services, and we've continued to maintain that vendor for our outsourcing. We continued to use that service when Donovan was here. He did have a hand in the building and inspections and the zoning to some regard, but primarily he was the economic development outreach for that department. When we started looking at things again over the summer and the need down there, we found that the need is probably more at this time going to be the planning and zoning aspect, the building inspection aspect, and those hands-on requirements for that position outside of the economic development realm. The marketing and outreach portion of the economic development, we feel can fall into the same position as community engagement director, which also encompasses what I talked about for the parks and the arts and culture and the recreation that we're trying to develop. This actually then would create the position in the community development department of a planning and zoning director, somebody who is more educated and experienced in the inspection services, in the planning and zoning, in urban planning, those types of things that we feel that department needs to keep us moving forward. If you look in front of you, I just added just before the meeting started, a history of our building permits over the last five years. You can see we've had a huge spike in those in the last three years. The most recent column to the right is just year-to-date. It has dropped off a bit, but the 24-25 number that you see, bless you, is a majority of those permits were issued near the end of last year, so some of that building is still taking place. And remembering too that a lot of our new businesses are in the enterprise zone, so you're not going to see those permits reflected in those numbers. However, that department is cooking, and we need somebody down there who can be hands-on with some of that development and some of those zoning and inspection needs. We could continue to outsource, and I think we intend to do that for a while with the transition. However, we're right now budgeting about $30,000 in outsourcing for those services. I think that once over time we get somebody down there who's a little bit more experienced, we could taper off on that outsourcing and save some money in that regard because we'd be able to bring those services in-house. So that's the idea of that position.
What part would be taken back from outsourcing, would you believe?
Some of the plan reviews and inspections.
So they'll have a license and plan reviewing and certification?
There would be a request for that in the advertisement for the job or familiarity with that. Some of the plan reviews are going to still have to be outsourced. Your stormwater reviews that the engineers do and some of your more extensive plan reviews for your larger developments would still need to be outsourced, but your day-to-day inspections and some of those smaller plan reviews could be done in-house.
Okay, I just, from just my experience, a lot of it needs to be, you can do some to look at it, but you still have to outsource it because even with the people that have the certification, it's not their day-to-day job.
Correct.
So yes.
Correct. And they would also be working on the urban development and that aspect of it as well. We do a lot of our inspections in-house, our sidewalk inspections, our residential inspections. All of those are not outsourced. Those are all in-house inspections.
I was just talking about plan review.
Plan review, a lot of plan review would still be outsourced, but smaller plans with residential could be done in-house. Questions? Okay. So if you go on to the strategic vision, and I know we updated this, or we looked at some updates on this at the last, at the last committee of the whole, what I did here is try to take what this governing body has envisioned us to do moving forward and compare it to what these positions would be able to help with obtaining some of those goals. The strong reliable infrastructure, you know, we've talked about this before. You have between Director Lambes and Rousey, 40-some years of infrastructure experience, okay? We've got this pretty much covered. We have pretty close to that with our police department. Safe community is doing okay. Efficient and effective government. There are some key strategies here that we have not met. And the highlight are the ones that I'm actually referring to. The line that you see from the bullet point to the bullet point corresponds with each one that is highlighted. I hope that makes sense. There really was no other way to try to manipulate that. But exploring partnerships with neighboring communities to share resources, that's a goal that we haven't met yet, and I feel that that can be something that is completed by our community engagement director. Improving communications with residents, again, community engagement. And launching a resident survey to inform the city's work in decision-making, that's community engagement. The next page, thriving economy. Establishing best-practice business retention and development program and partnering to build a business incubation program space. Planning and development director, community engagement director, and city administrator would all be involved in trying to obtain some of those key strategies to get us closer to that goal. These are all things that these people in these positions would be qualified to do and would be able to move us forward. Housing in neighborhoods. To be completed, planning and development director, explore incentives to encourage improvements to historical homes and neighborhoods. We have not even touched on that yet, and we're in year four of this? No, three? Three. We're going to be reevaluating this at the end of this next year. And then the final bullet point on this page, complete a housing stock and residential land inventory to inform a residential development and housing plan. Again, planning and development director. Revisiting our comprehensive land use plan is something that I know is on the mayor's agenda moving forward, and that is something that will need this person's expertise to do. Vibrant downtown. You can see there, we have a lot of work to do. And these are our tasks and things that need to be done mainly by the city administrator, the first two. However, the third one could also be achieved by the community engagement director. We have, if you recall, Purchase Blue Dot Software, which is a program that allows us to build our business database. It also allows the community to tap into that business database. We have only scratched the surface on that software, and we've had it for a year. So we need to move forward with some of these resources that we had and that we've paid for that we have not had a chance to use or to develop. We need the manpower to do that. We need the expertise to do that. Arts and culture, as we know, we have made little to no progress on that at all. That's going to require a lot of time and effort. We don't have a lot of arts and cultural options around here. I don't believe that that's out of reach, but I think it needs some engagement. I think it needs some partnerships. I think it needs some outreach to some other communities to see what they're doing. We need a person who's going to be able to take the time and to do that, and I think that's something that a community engagement director can do. And then parks and recreation. Parks master plan, again, that is something that we have on the list to revisit, and that is something that being also in the parks and recreation realm could be something the community engagement could do, I'm sorry, community engagement director could do. Again, we're going to collaborate with the library through the program guide and to continue those programs moving forward. I have highlighted on the following page how we recently partnered with the Harvard Diggins Library. I've already addressed that. And then, of course, we have the potential for a cultural venue through future grant funding at Milky Way Park, the Oslid Grant, and that is something that I'll be looking at moving forward after we get some things established with our infrastructure out in the Milky Way Park. So that is how I've tried to tie it into what you folks want to do moving forward so that we can complete out this strategic vision before we start looking at our next strategic vision, which will be at the end of next year. And more than likely, we're going to be tying some of these things into the next vision because these won't all be completed, but I do feel that if we have the opportunity to form these positions into what I see them to be, that we can make a lot of progress with this. And just to, I would like to go over just some brief qualifications when we're considering the person that we were recommending for this community engagement position. There is extensive experience in coordinating with stakeholders, building partnerships, creating outreach opportunities, engagement strategies, customer relation programs, leading a team as large of 10, launching new programs through data collection, and operating a $2.2 million budget. And this experience has been established over the last 15 years. So the qualifications are also there.
So Deb, I do have a question about like looking at the job description for community engagement director, and there isn't anything about qualifications.
No, I didn't. This isn't a formal job description because it's not actually something that we were going to put out for advertisement. So this was basically responsibilities, what the actual job would entail and what responsibilities.
Well, and I'll just be very blunt, and I don't have anything at all against Joe. I think she's incredibly talented, but I have some concerns about promoting somebody into a position for $95,000 a year, and we don't have a complete job description, and we haven't done any outreach for it. It's just, okay, it makes me uncomfortable.
Okay, so what would you like to see? Would you like to see her job or her qualifications?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a job description, a full job description, not just a list of duties.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can provide that for you.
Okay.
My philosophy on all of this and the way I think about it is that it's very important to use the talent that we have, and we have an incredible amount of talent. So I can provide that for you if that's what you'd like to see.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I get, go ahead, go ahead, Anna Marie.
And just to expound on that, we had a park director leave us unexpectedly. Who's to say that after everyone finds out all the talents that she has, someone isn't going to steal her from us? And I hope you love it here, and I hope this is the best thing you've ever seen. However, in today's job market and in today's challenges, people leave. And because of that, we, I think as a city, have to be prepared, if something like that were to happen, what are we going to do? We can't be left in a, well, let's hope there's someone else we can just promote up, because right now I don't see anybody that we could. So I think you make a very valid point that we have to be prepared as a city to that bigger what-if.
Well, like with Donovan leaving. So it's like, okay, now we're reorganizing everything because one person left. And yeah, it's an opportunity, I get that, but it's also, we had, you know, three years ago when we hired him, or about three years ago, we had decided to go in a different direction. And so then he left, and then now, okay, now we're going to, we're going to change directions again. And it may be the best thing, but it's, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's a concern, exactly.
There's more, get the ducks in a row as well before we make the commitment. Quick question though, I was going to ask after Anna Marie. You mentioned, this isn't for you, Deb, because you weren't in this position six years ago until now, but for the mayor, the library, we brought the library. For the six years, little six years since I've been here on the city council, I started out the Parks Committee. We never talked about, and six years ago when Ryan was here as the park superintendent, you guys harped on trying to get programming, programming. Why wasn't it then, as mayor, you didn't go, hey, the library, we have, we at least at the time sitting on the library board, who did bring in a bunch of ideas back then, hey, this is what they're doing. Now we have John sitting there, I know he attends the meetings. Why did it take over six years to finally say, hey, we're going, we're creating these programs that the library has, why don't we just work with them like now? Now it seems like once Joe got here, she's probably the one who brought that to your attention, that, hey, the library's been doing a bunch of this.
To answer your question, Matt, the answer is, we didn't view, it's all about perspective.
View what?
It's all about perspective. So we didn't view programming through the library as a way to extend our recreation. The focus was on the parks and recreation.
Well, the library does a lot of recreational programming.
Agreed.
And they're part of the city as well.
Agreed. And so when we reviewed all of this this summer, we said, hey, why can't we partner with the library to cover these particular issues that we've been trying to drive in the city, where they have success, they have staff that we don't have, and they have space that we don't have. So that's why we arranged a meeting, had a discussion with Karen to see, is this something that they would be willing to partner with us on? And she thought it was a fantastic idea, and so we pursued it. I would also suggest that you've been here for six years. Why didn't you think of it?
Mike, excuse me, I brought it up.
Many times.
I brought it up years ago.
And you denied it many times.
And I was ignored, so.
At this juncture, we are trying.
Mike, we're legislative. We don't come up with ideas all the time.
Agreed, agreed.
There you go. So that goes with your memo that you sent out to us. I was going to wait now. Us sitting on our hands. Sitting on our hands, we can not, we don't have to make a motion to city council.
No, you don't.
So I don't know why you sent that. Then you're saying about us, our comments towards employees during meetings. Guess what? I talk to much of these employees outside of meetings.
I know you do.
If they don't like me, they wouldn't talk to me.
That's not necessarily true.
Outside of functions. I just had black, black and gold ball. I was out there, and they all wanted to talk to me. They were there.
Okay. I'm just suggesting in that email that you're referring to.
Okay.
That some of the things that you have stated, or others have stated during council meetings, have been received by our staff as being less than professional.
Because we ask them questions, so we get more information, so we can make our vote?
That is not correct.
Okay, give us examples then.
I'm not prepared to give you an example.
Why not?
If you'd like to have that discussion, we can certainly have it offline.
You had, you sent this out November, what, second, third, maybe?
Where are you seeking? What do you want?
Well, you're accusing us as a city council of not doing our job.
No, I did not accuse you of not doing your job.
Yeah, sitting on our hands. Given the city council decided to sit on your hands and provide no feedback.
Okay, sir, give us direction. That's all we're seeking.
Okay, we don't need to make a motion though. So that's pretty much giving direction right there.
This is tonight. We are bringing to you what we would like to do, as designed by the city administrator and myself.
That was our direction that night. You didn't like it. Our direction on the committee structure for another one.
Okay, so we are here to explain all of that to you, sir.
And I'll bring that up on the next line item.
Well, when we get to that, you can.
Yes, I will, because we already brought that up a few months ago when we already decided how we were going to do committees.
Okay, what would you like to do to move forward, sir?
So Deb did do a good presentation night, so everything up together. I actually think, but when this was supposed to be my committee earlier this month, or I mean, in October for my community and economic development, this was a closed session initially. Not through Deb, because I even asked her that before that, who was, you were going to present it, and none of this was here. And then when it was the parks, yes, you were there. I watched it, and I heard some things. So I think you actually set Deb up kind of in a failure of not presenting all this to us as a whole so we can make the decision. Now we're here tonight.
I concur with you on that point. That's why we have the committee of the whole tonight, so that you have all the information available to you to make a decision. I take that on. You didn't have all the information available to you to take a decision.
Will we get an apology?
You have it today.
Will we get an apology tonight about this letter?
I'm sorry that you were upset that we couldn't move forward last week.
I'm not the only one. I'm just going to be the only one that's going to probably speak up most about it.
Again, you're prerogative, sir. We are presenting to you what the organization, we would like, the changes we would like to make to achieve the services that we need to provide. If you're not satisfied with this, please give us more direction.
So with this, I was actually, in which closed session, that probably was said, and talking to her out there, with what you guys presented with Joe, I'm pretty much, pretty much good with it, even though I know through an email there's a FOIA thing, thinking there's a conspiracy out there. But second, the only thing I'm very concerned about is I have feeling that we're traversed positions going, not going to be speaking to two different people. We already had that position before with an employee that retired last year that had many spots where we kept asking questions and ended up going, no, it was Public Works? No, it was actually city administrators, you know, that person told. And then we never got answers. That's my biggest concern. I think he needs to be underneath one person, and then, actually, and for Deb, she's the city administrator. I don't think she should be with one employee that's hourly. She shouldn't be, she's the whole thing. She shouldn't, the department head should be coming to her. She shouldn't be department heads and then one hourly city employee she's supposed to be overseeing. That should be a department head, one department head that oversees that employee.
Fair enough. City administrator, you have any comments to that?
No, I think that's a fair, fair request, and I think we can reorganize that and look at that a little closer. I just want to clarify something though, just so that it's on record, that this document that's in front of you now was in here when we met for community development in closed session, when the mayor presented it at parks. This is something that we've been discussing all summer. And again, it came from my perspective of from going behind it, being behind a desk, doing nothing but finances, to all of a sudden having everything thrown at me and going, wait a minute, how are we going to make all this work? How are we going to replace this Parks and Recs director? How are we going to replace Donovan? And how are we going to make it all work? Where is the need? And how does it integrate into what this city wants to do and how we want to move forward? It was always in there. I just didn't put it on paper until I was preparing for tonight. So I just want to clarify that, that that's not something that I just threw together last.
Deb, I don't, I don't, I believe you on that part. I just think.
Well, and it was, it was a group effort. I mean, the mayor and I, we spoke a lot, you know, it wasn't just like, let's go do this. There was a lot of time and effort put into it, and there was a lot of consulting with other staff as well, because, you know, the day-to-day operations of the city, there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes, and it takes all of us to.
No, I get that. I've been doing this now six years. I understand that 100% completely. I guess, and I think going to the two committees, that's, it should have went, but the way the But the way the committees were structured and how we've done it in the past, one of me being the longest ones with, uh, Lisa on the council, with the mayor, is then it would usually go to admin for the big final thing. And I get that and I, I know, you know, the government, slow moving parts, but I didn't think this needed to be a, a quick rush. This wasn't something like, hey, we're gonna, we need to, uh, buy this or it's not gonna be there. Hey, we need to do this stuff. I, it should have went to city admin after that, cause those are the other three.
And I had to ask, why, why did it need to go through city admin?
Cause that's how the process is. Anytime we appointed, hired a department head, went to that committee and then it went to city admin. Since then, when, since I've been.
Not true. That's not true.
Uh.
When, when Director Lambes was hired, it went to infrastructure and then went to city council.
And I know it's starting in infrastructure, um, but like Parks, um.
Parks went to Parks and then went to city council.
Actually, Parks actually.
The utility went to infrastructure and then went to city council. The city administrator went to admin.
Yes.
Because the admin has control over city administration.
But it went, but it went to that committee after it went to the interview process, then it went to admin.
No, did not.
Lisa, can you help me out with that?
I'm, I'm just trying to think back. I mean, my.
I'm telling you, it did not. It went from the corresponding committee to the city council.
Well, and I guess that was when I asked, cause I, I asked you about it, about it going to, why didn't it go to admin? And my thinking on that was that it was a structural change. It's creating a new department, which I like been looking, it is.
But it's not.
But it is, Mike. I saw the, I saw the new organizational chart. And now there's this new department head. And, and then there's Parks over, there's Pool over here.
Okay, but here, here's the issue. We have three positions and you have enough budget to fill two. So somebody has to wear a double hat. Previously, that double hat was Donovan, Community Development and Economic. When, um, Joe applied for the position amongst other applicants, um, I saw in her an opportunity that we could promote her for the economic development portion of that job, but not the community development. Well, that's, that's a problem. Additionally, when we, the other candidates that I interviewed for the position to replace Donovan had one or the other, not both. Um, there was only one candidate that could fill both roles like Donovan could. And that person got hired before I could interview him. Because there's not many people out there that hold both of those skill sets. So when Deb and I sat down and looked at this and like, how are we gonna fill this, these roles? Because we're struggling to find the person that is a Donovan, if you will. Um, could we separate those two positions and make them, you know, cause they're really separate departments? And then combine the one with a different department? So we haven't added any departments. We've just reorganized how those departments would be department headed. So you still have community development, you still have economic development, you still have Parks. We filled those three roles with two people. So instead of it being community and economic and Parks, we're gonna say, community and economic development, Parks. It's the same number of people we had before. We've just moved economic development to the Parks person. And to help the Parks person be able to manage that, we said, okay, let's move all maintenance away from this Parks person so that they have the additional bandwidth to do economic development. So we moved that to utilities, which makes a lot more sense because from a maintenance perspective, the utilities department has more mechanics than any of our Parks directors have had ever. Cause they work on those type of systems. So it makes a lot more sense for utilities to manage the maintenance and ongoing operations of the pool, which frees up a ton of time for, um, this position, which we wanted to create, community, um, engagement director, which is going to incorporate Parks and economic development. So those two departments are still there.
It sounds like just Pool. And economic development, because you now have the, the chart that we saw had the, um, had the Trevor's position.
Yes.
Not reporting, they had that position reporting to the administrator, not to community engagement. So it's, Mike, it's confusing. It's very, very confusing.
So I think, I think the organization chart is probably the thing that tripped everybody up. I had asked city administrator, hey, as part of this, when we were presenting that for the city council, we should include a work chart so everybody understands where everybody goes. And I think the issue is where does Trevor fall into that organization chart? Cause it's clear, at least two of you have an issue where it was put. I think the reason that Deb put it there, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, the reason that that was put there was because half of the year Trevor would report to Public Works. And also sits on the Public Works, um, uh, rotation list for on-call duty. And it was important that he remain, uh, in the, in the union, because we moved them to a department head. If we fall out of the union, he would not be able to cover.
So he should report to a department head, not as the city administrator?
Yes, please allow me to finish, please. I allowed you to finish. Please allow me to finish. So, um, the idea was we would have him report to Rob. But during the winter months, when he's not really needed for Parks, um, or I'm sorry, during the winter months, he would report to Rob. During the summer months, when he has an own crew reporting to him, it's not really appropriate that he would report to Mar, uh, to Rob. So Deb thought, well, we, under the previous administration for that similar position, that person reported to the city administrator. Because it created, um, in the past, it created conflicts between the two departments about where that person was gonna go on any particular day. And so because of that friction that had happened in the past, that person was moved to report directly to the city administrator. So I believe that's why Deb set it up that way, but you can comment on your own.
That's correct.
So.
Just to, in ease, a reporting ease, so that there wasn't half the year reporting one year, half the year reporting the other year. Or I'm sorry, half the year reporting to one person, the other half the year another person. They just report to the same person all year.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it has to stay that way. That's just what was my thought process.
So Mike, my recommendation, since most other municipalities usually have Public Works, because we don't have a true, uh, building department that does maintenance here. So Public Works is kinda like, does all that stuff. Trevor should only report to Rob then. And then Public Works, since that's what it is, they're the ones who maintain the parks. Cause actually, when, when we don't have the seasonal help, who does it? Public Works. So for maintenance, since he's on maintenance and that's pretty much what he's gonna be doing, he shouldn't report to him since Trevor's not gonna be doing the pool because utilities is now handling the pool.
Okay, that's an easy fix.
Okay. Um, and to go to the other comment about only two of us, that's probably why there was no motion. It was more than two of us, it seemed like that night.
Um, well, at least five of the, um, committee members have been presented that information between the two committees.
Five?
Four.
Four. There's only four. Three weren't in any of those other two committees.
Okay. At any rate, that's why we're having this meeting now. So you guys have all the information to make your, um, make decisions and give us feedback and direction.
I think a month from now.
And then we will put this on the city council's agenda in the future for you to approve.
In regards to the strategic vision, when we originally had the workshop, we talked about certain things, um, that would be available to go with Parks and Recreation because they were just kinda floating out there. The arts and communication, the cultural stuff. Right now, I see that wanting to be put under, um, the purview of what the position that we would like Joe to fill as being part of that continuing of the vision. So I don't think it's too chaotic to be pulling that out and just pushing it over there when we were already trying to put into the Parks and Recreation, um, you know, the things there. And then I don't know if anybody else has, um, access to her resume. But I think that would help a lot of the other committee members feel a lot more confident about, um, pursuing this action, because it's not like we're hiring her into a whole new thing. We're just including different roles now, so that way we can best utilize everybody that we have. So I don't know if with the strict guidelines being added, um, if we would discuss this specifically at the next city council meeting or if we need to make a motion specifically today to do something. I don't know exactly where we're going with this and I would appreciate some kind of clarification.
Well, I think staff also, we would like clarification on how you wanna proceed. This is, this is our recommendation on how to fill out the, um, uh, the remaining seats and that we need to fill to be able to continue doing the services and provide services we provide to community. I can tell you that this woman right here can't do it all by herself. She's a superstar, but she's, she is struggling because we, we have holes to fill.
Mayor, I might add a couple of things and, and, um, maybe this will clarify, maybe I'm confused, but Alderwoman Lancaster, to the, to the extent that you're suggesting, um, questions about particular candidates qualifications for the community engagement director position, that would, um, you know, typically that's done in a closed session. If we're talking about the, um, overall concept of, you know, as the mayor was saying, you have Parks, Community, how those structure is set up within the city, that is, you know, obviously something for this body to deliberate and decide, what do you want? Ignoring any name on an org chart, what you want the organization chart to look like. And then, uh, to the extent you're filling that in, obviously, you would talk about individual candidates that could be brought to you, would, would happen in closed session to discuss their qualifications.
Okay. I just didn't know if any of the other council members were feeling ill at ease of, at the last meeting, to continue on that pathway, because I thought it was honestly, I thought it was with the both being suggested to go straight to city council by both committees, both community development and, um, Parks and Recs, that it, it just left me very confused. Um, granted, I was on a delay too. So I don't know if there were things that I was missing, because I tried to view some of it on YouTube too, in order to try to get some, it, it was just difficult. But, um, I didn't know if that would help other people that might not be well acquainted with Joe and having seen her and interviewed her. Cause I don't know anybody else other than John that may have seen her resume previously when we were looking at Park and Recs, like, directors.
I saw it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was part of the interviews.
I couldn't remember. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. A lot has happened since then.
So I just, I didn't know. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody is feeling good and happy about a good direction here, especially because she's more than capable of doing everything that we've been detailing. So. Anyways, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Uh, and I think on the last page of the, uh, or next last page, um, talks about the, uh, funding for this. And, uh, from a, from a finance perspective, our solution is less than we budgeted for, for this fiscal year. So from a budget perspective, we would meet all of our criteria and more for less money.
So I'll just continue or finish up what I was trying to say about admin and, and why I had raised this as something coming to admin. And then we got off on the topic of, no, it's not a new department, blah, blah, blah. There are things in our code that reference specific positions. Like in the chapter five, boards and commissions. And there's the whole section on Parks, on the Parks Board and the composition of the Parks Board and the responsibilities of the Park Superintendent. And the Parks Board providing direction to the Park Superintendent and all of this stuff. And okay, so now then there's no Park Superintendent. So then that's just gone. I mean, so it's, those are the kinds of things that bother me.
That's, that's fair.
Well, so this is, this isn't just, you know, shuffling the deck a little bit. I mean, there's stuff in our code that needs to be changed to reflect. When we make significant changes like that, we, we have, there's other considerations as to what needs to be changed. So that's why, for me, it was like, this seems like an ad, this has to go to admin.
Well, to your, to your comment, I would say.
That's fine.
I would say that anything that is listed as Park Superintendent in the current code would still go to the community development or the community engagement director, because they would now take on those duties or continue with those duties as more appropriate.
But those are the kind of things that I don't, I don't like working those things out at a committee. To be very honest, or at a city council meeting. Those are the kinds of things that I think should be worked out at a committee level. And then come back to the council with a complete description of this is, these are the changes that are proposed. And these are all of the, the pieces that go along with that and how this is all gonna fit together. Um, I mean, it's, I hate to keep coming back to it, but it's, it's a really good cover memo. Is what I want, that, you know, explains everything and does answer those questions that to me are just part of how we, how we do things, how we, how we get from here to, to there. Just showing that all the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed and that we've thought it all through. Because I feel, it feels to me and felt to me with, um, what I saw with the Parks Committee, that it was, um, of a lot of, um, it was a lot of, a lot of words being said and a lot of, a lot of passion, a lot of good information, but I still wanna see it in writing before I'm gonna make a decision. And seeing a picture of an org chart that raised more questions than it answered wasn't, yeah.
And those are all fair comments.
Yeah. So that's, that's where I was coming from.
And I think very fair comments. So thank you.
Sure.
Um, what do you wanna do? Council? How do you wanna solve this problem? Cause we need direction.
Well. It's complicated some more. So.
Okay.
This, this fell through the channels through appointment, correct? This issue that we're dancing around? I mean.
To, to a degree, yes, yes, yes.
Another version is you put jobs out for posting, people apply, you go through the process. To have clarity and transparency through this process, regardless of its appointment or someone applying, once you come up with a policy and a procedure, that's the same no matter what you do. Start to finish. If it has to go through all the committees, you've done all the work by the time it hits council. I know you're trying to save time and money, but seems like when you miss certain things or certain people aren't a part of some things, you get a lot of this. I think it would be very clear. I mean, Joe is more than capable. Ruby was more than capable, right? But I think a lot of that stuff out there, especially for being a new member, it'd be nice to get all the information. Not that there, you're looking for something to pick on or pull out, but to be, basically be able to answer any questions, you know, from each other, the public, those people who may be employed here. I think you can do a better job of do it the same way across the board and you can't get confused. Is there a policy in place or a procedure?
There, there is no established, um, codified procedure.
Sounds like it would be a lot easier to make one, right?
Are you talking about like our interview and job posting procedures? Our typical or our, our past practice procedure has been to take it to the committee in which the position applies. So if it's, again, Director Lambes' position, it was run through infrastructure and, uh, same with Director Rousey. Uh, previous to Director Atkinson, Stacy's position was run through Parks. So that's always been the procedure. Um, I agree that not every member of the council gets, you know. member of the council gets, you know, all of the information. Perhaps the procedure is to do it in a committee of the whole, so that everybody's present at once, and it's all done, done together, and, you know, that could be the procedure. How, how we want that to look is some direction that I can take, but past procedure has been to do it in that regard, based on what committee the, the position is going to be serving.
I, I think one of the things that Joel said that really resonates with me is that there's a procedure for hiring, but for promoting, and, you know, I did my best to read everything that we had, being a new council member. You get to hire who you want to, Mayor. We get that. I think we all get that. We get to approve, but you still get to choose. That's, that's your job. That's what the people elected you to do. Um, but when we're talking about changing things around and promoting from within, Joel said the word transparency. Especially for us new people, we're not feeling, it might be there, but we don't feel it. Now, taking feelings out of it, we said the procedure was for hiring, but the procedure for maybe appointing just doesn't seem as clear to us.
Well, I think-
For our new, for, I, I think Joel said it, and I'm just kind of repeating it again, so that-
Appointing would be the same procedure. When I was appointed finance director, it went through admin. Um, so I think appointing is, and we just haven't had the opportunity to appoint another departments yet, so.
So, in, so in this case, it went through the two appropriate committees for the position, because it's Parks and Recreation and Community, um, yes, Community Development, or I should say Economic Development, and so that's why I went to those two committees, and then went to council. So, where I see, um, and acknowledge that, um, the rest of the council who are not on those two committees, we're not in the complete know, um, which is a discussion for the next agenda item that we will come to.
Right.
But, but in the end, um, it, it becomes a bit frustrating for a lot of reasons, um, to take an issue to several committees. You know, the point of committees are simply for a smaller group to review whatever the issue is and make a recommendation to the full council. Many issues that end, are starting committees, come before you, that you weren't involved in, because you're not on that specific committee.
Right. So, okay, I was on both of those committees, but I don't ever remember us being directed to make a recommendation. That's-
Oh, and yet, that's true.
That's, so that, maybe that's where my confusion-
Was it? It was more, it was going to go straight to city council.
So, so-
At least in my committee.
And, and so maybe that's where I'm confused.
But, but in, in an appointment, the committee does not make a recommendation to the council.
That's, so that's what I'm missing. Thank you.
The mayor makes the recommendation for the appointment, and the full council either agrees or disagrees.
But, but let's, let's just step back to the whole idea of transparency, and so why do we have to have our packets out at least 48 hours before the meeting? It's not just for the council members. It's for the public. And what was presented in the packet in connection with the appointment was not transparent. There was no information in the packet, other than an organizational chart, which was confusing at best. Um, and so I would, in situations like that, I would err on the side of providing complete information for the community, because as a member of the community, that was not transparent. That was just the mayor is appointing somebody to a new position. And that's how, I mean, just on the surface of it, that wasn't the intent, but that, just given black and white, that was what that looked like.
So, maybe that's the stuff that is required. So, for my example is, I'm not on the parks board, I'm not on community development. I did watch the parks board, but I wasn't privy to the closed session. Then it went straight to the next meeting. So, having all that, for someone in my position, would have benefited me, knowing the big picture of everything involved, other than just assuming and following everybody's recommendation, or voting yes, 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 just to vote yes.
Yeah, but I mean, partially, what I look at it is that I rely on the other committees that I'm not on to digest and go through the information, and then to, in, in this particular case, bring it up for a vote in council, and then we could talk about it. Because you, you are correct, 100% Joel. You didn't see anything. Lisa didn't see anything. I didn't see it. Okay. Um, now, yes, the, the parks board, uh, parks board, um, uh, meeting was online. I couldn't saw it, but I didn't. All right. The, the minutes of the meeting, I got four hours before the city council meeting, and I didn't see those either. And so, so, you know, basically when it came up to, you know, what are we going to do, I was waiting for one of those committees who actually had, were in the know, to bring it up to vote. And when none of them did, I didn't, you know, didn't really think it was my place to do it. So, they, I figured that they figured that it wasn't something they wanted to do. And once again, just like I hope they rely on me to take care of my committee, I rely on them to take care of their committee.
All fair comments.
I agree with John on that. And I mean, I do apologize to you, Joel, because it had to be embarrassing, uncomfortable. It was for me. I kept looking up like, what's going on? And do I undermine my, everyone around me by saying, well, maybe I should assume what I know what I'm doing, and move forward with no backing?
So, they-
So, I, we just, I think we need that. We need a much better communication line here.
More transparency.
So, I have acknowledged that there should be more information available to you. Um, hence, this is why we called this meeting, so that everybody has all the information available to you, so that when it comes to you at a later date for, uh, the appointment, that you have all the information you need to make that decision. Um, and so, as part of that, I've asked the city administrator to put that into a memo form, which was part of, uh, tonight's agenda. And I anticipate that that kind of, um, information will be available to you for the future, uh, in future meetings, because, uh, this particular issue continues to, to, uh, kind of come up. And ideally, we're all on the same team. We all want the same things. Um, but clearly, you need to have the information ahead of time to make decisions. And so, I and the staff will be prepared to do that, so that you have information, so you can make decisions. If you find that you don't have the information that you need to make a decision, please call. Please call. Call me, call Deb, call the department head that you need to speak to about the particular issue that's before you, that you need information on, because when, when we're unable to address an issue that's on the agenda, for whatever reason, whether it was our mistake, or our, um, uh, in a deficiency in providing you the info, or on your side for not obtaining the info, regardless, it, it causes a roadblock for whatever issue that we need to address, and now we have to put it off into the future. In this particular case, um, while it might have seemed rushed from your perspective, um, this has been something we've been working on for many months. And because, I, I can't even tell you the amount of hours that this person has been putting into the organization over the last several months, because they've been shorthanded, and the hours that our staff have been putting in to fill those holes is unbelievable. And so, yes, it may appear rushed, because we need to fill these holes so we can go about providing the services that we are required to provide to the community. And the longer that these things get delayed, the harder it is for us to continue to provide those services. And so, we will do our part to try and help you be prepared. Uh, I take on that comment from you guys, to make sure that you have the information you need in the future, and if you don't, please tell us when you don't, so that we can get it for you.
And I would hope that Deb feels like she could go out and advertise for a new community development director, or whatever that position is called, um, to fill that position. I mean, that's a key position, and there's, you know, there's no question. If she feels that it needs to be organized a certain way, given what, what's going on in the city, I think that's, that's 100, 100% her, her responsibility and her, in her, um, her view as the administrator.
Well, we have delayed, um, advertising for the position, waiting on direction from the council, because, um, had that happened at the previous council, we would have gone ahead and, and publicized that right away. But because we weren't sure where the council was, um, and granted, for all the reasons that we've discussed, um, we had delayed that, because we wanted to ensure that we understand what direction you were comfortable with us taking.
Are we talking about community engagement director?
Well, planning development director.
Yeah, that was already discussed that, once you got approved officially with the contract, you were going to send that out, which you're sending it out this month. I remember you specifically saying that. So, I don't think that, sitting on the, sitting on our hands last month, city council was going to delay that job posting of building department head.
Actually, it does, because it determines the title of that department, as well as some of the responsibilities and qualifications.
Well, we already tried that before you got appointed, or, um, not appointed, hired as city administrator when you were interim, and the mayor felt like there was no qualification. So, we were already going in that direction of trying to split that up.
Right. But if you look at the responsibilities that are included, it does hinge on engaging with the community engagement director as the liaison to that department. So, I can't modify this job description for advertisement until I have direction on the other, the other position, because that will change up what this position looks like. Does that make sense?
For the building department? Because even if they didn't have someone, another department head next to them?
Well, it would just change the job description. If we're not going to fulfill the one, the one job, that I'm going to have to reorganize this job to try to hold some of those roles in, to get the help I need in that, in that area that's lacking in the city.
All right.
So, in order to move forward with the proposed community engagement director, what I'm hearing is, we need to send the issue to the admin committee to modify or mitigate, um, current ordinances to accept that type of position.
That's what I was going to say before Joel started on his path. [laughing] When he said he was going to extend it, I was like, oh, darn it, I was going to end this.
Well, I'd like to know, does anybody go have a issue with what the mayor and, and, uh, what we're proposing here to do? Taking those three positions, make it two. Does anyone have any issues with that?
I think it's a logical, uh, step, because of the stuff that we were talking about in our strategic vision. It, it, that one rule does encompass those things, so, at least-
Sure we're okay on, you know?
My, my only concern is, when, when I look at the community engagement director, and some of the other things that that person will be sitting on, that's a lot of flipping work, and I'm just wondering if, if at some time that person will need an assistant or something, and if we should consider it, if we should start considering that now or, or not. But again, that'd be something, maybe the admin committee. But as I look, just knowing, sitting on several different boards myself, and then having to do a full-time job, it gets to be a lot. And although it doesn't seem like it, when you get into the thick of things, I would, I don't want to set anyone else in our city for failure by throwing too much work at them.
You're correct. It is a lot of work. And that's why, when I went through and looked at all of, all of the, these two positions combined with my own, and what that's going to look like, because mine is drastically different from what I've been doing as well. And some of those things have been moved off my plate with the bookkeeper treasurer position slowly as we go, and I'm training her, that it's freeing up my time to do more of this as well. And I believe that, for now, it can be handled between the three of us, being the director downstairs, the director upstairs, and myself. And should it get to that point, I, of course, will be coming back to you and probably asking for additional help. But I think right now it's manageable, until we actually determine what it's going to look like. This is new, right? It's, it's, it's new, and any kind of change is not easy to grasp and to understand until it actually happens. But I think for now, it's manageable. I think it's going to be a joint effort, but I think we can pull it off.
Thank you. And, no, I don't have, other than concerned with the amount of work, I, I think, um, I, I, I think it's a good structure, considering we had some unicorns in the past, and-
We have unicorns now.
Yes, we do.
We just need to put them into a unicorn position.
Just, just different, just, uh, different vibrancy.
[laughing] Fair enough. Uh, so, I think what we have is direction to send this to administration committee for, uh, review of, um, affected ordinances.
And there will be more than one, because if we change the position title of the person downstairs, it's also codified in, I believe, chapter two, as the zoning administrator, so that will be a required change as well. So, there are several, um, I've actually already been looking at council, or looking with council at some of them, so-
Yeah.
Get those all together. Can we do a special admin meeting in December to address that?
John, Joel? I know, John, you have an allergic reaction to more meetings.
Oh, we're gonna-
Oh, true.
It's fine with me. I'm weather permitting, so.
I can have a ready as soon as possible.
Certainly. My office is available for whatever you need for that.
I know they are.
Billable hours.
By the hour.
I was going to say, how about the third?
It's a Wednesday.
There won't be a tree board, right?
No, no, there won't be a tree board, so.
That would work.
You also want to see the qualifications on the reorganization of that job description as well?
Yeah, yeah, the full, the full job description. And then, uh, the new, um-
Chart?
Chart of how people, how things are re- Joel?
Still talking about the third?
The third. 6:30 on the third.
Individually, yeah.
Some, some, some substation doesn't blow up.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah.
No more fires.
Jeanette, you can add that to the city calendar. And you, you got the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I, a quick question, and city administrator and Alderwoman had her line, traditionally, we don't attend your admin, administration committee here, uh, committee meetings, given the changes. Is this something you're going to want council to attend, or, like, to the extent possible, obviously, we'd get everything to the city administrator, but I just-
I don't-
Perfect.
Yeah.
Just for my notekeeping and calendaring.
Yeah. I mean, if, 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 between now and then, Deb decides that, oh, we better have the attorney there.
Well, if I get the, um, the modifications made and get them over to you, you can research that before-
Yeah.
The third, and then we'll just be ready to go.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And I can send you what I've been making notes on.
Okay.
Perfect. Uh, any more, how much questions on this agenda item? Nope? All right, then we will move on to item, uh, number six, is discussion action on committee meeting structure. Um, so, we're, we want to chat about this because of the previous agenda item, and some of the things that came out of having individual committee meetings, as well as we've, you know, we had so many committee meetings, that we tried to reduce the volume of committee meetings to accommodate not only the committee members, but as well as staff, in terms of their time for, um, meeting minutes and translations. And so, reducing that volume of workload has been very helpful, I think, for the deputy city clerk, um, and also for staff to be prepared for committees, for whatever information that they need to bring to those committees, uh, specifically infrastructure for you guys, and, and the like. We also have run into an issue like, uh, I think this month, we had an issue that went to infrastructure, but we're also going to be bringing it to admin, because infrastructure approved the process, uh, admin needs to approve the money. And so now we're doing double work. process. Admin needs to approve the money. And so now we're doing double work. And so um I'm making a recommendation to go to just a single committee of the whole each month in which all issues are brought together and then it goes to council at the end of the month. That would just be two meetings that we would all need to attend. Um and as part of this recommendation, um when looking at a neighboring community that does this very type of structure, I do like what they do in that the chairperson for the committee of the whole is rotated amongst the council members so that each council member um is the chairperson for quarter. So over the course of two years, um every council member will have an opportunity to chair the committee. And in your four year term, you'd have two opportunities.
What community is that there?
Uh Huntley, Huntley. So um my understanding is from that community that that structure works very, very well, keeps the issues that need to come before you on a very timely and um regular cadence, gives staff plenty of time to be prepared between so that the whatever issues are coming before council at the end of the month, they've got plenty of time to deal with that. Um and it will help eliminate some of this issue where we've seen um something happening in one committee and you're not a part of that committee. So you didn't quite understand what happened. And then we we have um a lack of communication. It streamlines it for efficiency. It streamlines it for work life balance. Um and it gives each of you the opportunity to also um control the meeting for a quarter um and rotates that around so that everybody has an opportunity to be um engaged. This is my recommendation. Obviously, it's up to council whether you would want to pursue that or not. I would also recommend we maintain our standing committees because for special projects, for instance, um the changes we need to do to codify for a new, a new position, uh I don't think that should be bogged down in the committee of the whole. I feel like that would go as like a special project to that specific committee. So those committees would still maintain and if there was a special issue that needed to go to those committees, then those would be ad hoc. Um that's my recommendation. I feel like that's going to alleviate a lot of the problems that we've been seeing and 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 helps us be a better, more efficient organization.
They come with a time limit on those meetings? Because I mean, if you're going to do two meetings a month and they're all four hours apiece, you're really not saving anybody time.
Well, interestingly enough.
Go to it either.
In the past, the council used to have two committee, two council meetings every month.
Not much to talk about back then though either.
Excuse me?
Wasn't much to talk about back then either.
I I can't comment because I wasn't part of the uh the structure then. Were you? Yeah, you can, you were.
And I think you were as well, Deb. Uh there were, there was one big difference at that time, and that is that the committee meetings were much more relaxed and not everybody, but the majority of the council came to those meetings. It wasn't just the committee that came to the meeting. So that that way, as much as possible, like the committee of the whole, um entire council was informed on whatever the issue was at that committee meeting. So that when it came to the city council meeting, it was almost a rubber stamp because everybody already knew and had already talked it out. Um back in those days, it was rare for a council meeting to last more than thirty minutes. And I I know of one in particular that was ten minutes long. But because it was because everything was was discussed openly uh during the committee meetings.
Well, what do we, the new people, we've been here, what, six months, seven months?
Yeah, and we've had two changes.
Right.
So far.
So those changes were because it didn't work before. Now this didn't work, the change didn't work, we're doing another change.
But I don't even think we've given this a chance to see if it works or not because we've, we haven't done it that long. And that's my concern. You know, any habit, you know, any habit takes time, any change takes time. And what, we've done this two months? That we've changed this? So one thing didn't work out and um we've learned because we've all experienced this every other meeting month now. And now we've all learned a little bit and everyone's maybe a little bit more attentive about watching the videos and reaching out and that type of thing. So I'm hesitant to change it again until we find out if maybe we've learned something from this and that we can go on. I I like the structure of being able to have a smaller committee. I think there's a little bit more, we talk about honesty and transparency in those things. I think sometimes people being all together can get a bit emotional and or not emotional or not say things because they're like, oh, everybody's here. Or or maybe they get emotional because, oh, everybody's here. I I like the current structure. I think we need to give it a little more time, but I'd be happy to revisit it to see if if it's not working after maybe six months, to revisit it and then say, you know what, to heck with that. You know, Anna Marie, we gave it a chance. Look how we're failing. And I'd be, I'd be willing to then say, you're right, council, mayor, we we couldn't make it work that way. Then let's go to a committee as a whole. That's my opinion.
My concern also, in addition to those, is that if we go ahead and just do a committee of the whole thing, uh and with parks, I know we have at least two people there from the public that are serving on that board. What are they going to do? Are they going to be allowed to come to the committee of the whole? Or are they just like pretty much
So they would meet when the Parks and Recreation Committee met. So as part of the committee of the whole, they would not participate.
So if there was an ad hoc meeting, they would.
That that does, I mean, just from.
I'm just curious because they they joined up just to be able to participate.
Well, and it just seems to to negate, it effectively negates five point oh four, the Parks and Recreation Board and that whole section of the ordinance. And it just sort of says, well, okay, not really, only if.
We already modified one since we've been on Lisa.
I know, I know. So.
I'm just asking too, if you did committee of the whole and the public was attending for a specific item, they got to sit through the whole night until wherever that lines up comes from?
It's similar as as they do with a regular city council meeting.
How does that helping the public engage with us if we're put them through something like that, if it was to become an issue?
Yeah, I would say.
I wouldn't want to come and say, I got to wait three hours to get my two cents.
I think the engagement aspect comes more from the fact that the public knows every second Tuesday or second Wednesday, whichever, however it would be established is always the committee of the whole instead of, well, when's infrastructure this month? Well, when is parks next month? And just easier to, I think we would have more engagement if it was a set date every month. And they could stay for the part they wanted to stay for and then leave. Yeah, you're right. They would have to sit through the whole thing if it was near the end. But then they'd also have to seek out, well, when is the Parks Board meeting? Oh, it's in two months from now. And I have to wait two months to do that or I could do it every other. Correct me if I'm wrong, council, can they take action during the committee of the whole if there was something that needed to be decided on right away?
You would not be able to take action on something during committee of the whole. You could recommend that the city council take action or you could recommend calling special meeting if something was immediate. But the council, because it'd be sitting as the committee of the whole versus sitting as the city council, you'd not be able to take action on something at that time.
But they could. So you could, if you were meeting in admin this month, instead of waiting till the next council meeting, the following month, you'd only have to wait two weeks to take that action. So it could expedite some of those projects and things that were going on as well instead of waiting for another month for another committee meeting. So there's, there's pros and cons to both.
Sure.
I guess my um being here now for six years, when it started, like I said, the thirty minute city council, forty five minutes, yes, it it went quicker then. Um first year like with Anna Marie, Joel and well, Mike's second time, so he knows how it's done. But uh but yes, when you're quiet, you just watched everything, didn't really engage because you didn't know what to do, got that. But within a year, we were still having shorter city council meetings, but being at the committees, you were able to engage then. Um then we got busier, yes. Then there was more projects, more of the grant stuff started, actually in closer timeline to do things. So and then we brought in a new city administrator that brought in a bunch of things. So that's when our committee committees started going almost an hour and a half, two hours, two and a half hours to just committees. And then city council though ended up going about another hour, hour and a half, well, if and a little bit longer. And there's that big word again I'm going to use because transparency from when the initial administrator I sat on with, um when stuff was done or was voted on, that played out. We found out when we were told in city council this was going on, found out a few months later, no, there was a little bit something else that wasn't giving us all the information that we thought we got when we voted on. So I do like the committee thing. And that's why we ask questions. And that's why it's still, city council's still a little bit longer because we still like to ask those questions because of thinking, hey, no, this used to be Dave Nelson. Deb's going to be another Dave, I'm assuming. But um but they do.
That's not very nice.
But to keep in the word on things. But but that's the reason why we still ask questions a lot. And that's that transparency.
All right.
And and I I'd like to add, you know, you had a specific reason for calling this meeting as a whole tonight. And I don't think that's a bad thing. And if we need to have a a committee as a whole meeting, then let's do it. Let's, let's do it. But I I think we we really need to give what we're doing every other month a chance.
Any, any other comments?
Yeah. Can we fix this tech thing though? Because when I want to watch these videos or I'm at work or I'm on shift, you know, it's important that these videos work and the microphones work. It's the quickest way to get that information for me versus waiting for documentation or emails, et cetera. I don't know what goes on with this stuff, but why does it not work half the time?
Yeah. So obviously, it should be clear, you know, it's been my desire and I think council's desire to have transparency and do the streaming. And um from twenty sixteen, we've been moving in that direction. When we built this building and then I think the following year, we were able to budget to bring to buy some of this equipment to to make that happen. But it's not, it's kind of piecemeal together. So um we could certainly have a more robust system that is less technically challenged, but we worked within the budget we had. I anticipate at some point in the future, we'll probably request additional funding to make a more robust system. But what I will say is we're light years ahead of where we were. And and most of our meetings have gone off without a hitch, but we've had some equipment failures in the past couple of months. We've had to replace a multiplexer, I think, twice now. Um and so unfortunately, if the equipment goes down, we don't, we don't have a backup system to be able to do that. So your point's well taken. It's just um, you know, a priority of funding for um making a more robust system. And ideally, I would like to have a separate person that's managing that and not the mayor or the scout or the clerk or someone else.
Might be saving money now with this new restructure. Charlie, he's big on it. He was big on it when he was city council. We could.
He's listening too.
He he uh well, and I do appreciate what Charlie does outside of city council in his unofficial uh thing because he certainly is helping people kind of condense what we talk about into a more palatable um way of getting that information. But I, fair point, if I could talk him into it, I would love to.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it be better.
Yep, I agree. I agree.
Few times at midnight, I'm sitting like, great, here's a break and the microphone's on, watching everybody talk and nothing comes through. But I tell anyone that talks to me outside of here, whether it be a constituent or not, I'm always pushing that. I go, it's real easy. Follow this. All the answers are there. And it does help the public a lot more than just assuming or talking about it somewhere else.
Agreed. Absolutely.
If we can work on it, that's all.
Um, okay. Well, again, the the standing committee structure that we've created here that we have all created was really, you know, when I first became mayor and I'm sure past um council members could attest, you know, most of these committees met ad hoc. And there were no committees of the whole. They just met at city council. And oftentimes, the information presented to council, like the council had no preconceived notions or any information other than what was in the package. And the idea of creating those committees was pushing the information out to you, the decision makers, so that you're prepared when it comes to city council that you make these decisions. Um and and that whole point of creating those those committees was to garnish more engagement for our council members because frankly, so many years ago, weren't quite as involved as this crew is. So I would say from that perspective, the committees have definitely um helped to bridge that gap that we had a huge gulf um before years ago. So it's never been my intent to try and take that away from you. It is just trying to streamline the process and eliminate where we've had deficiencies. I'm happy to continue on with, I mean, I wanted to institute that process from the beginning, which we did and it has been running. Um it was the volume, we went to go reduce it because of the amount of volume. If it, we could continue going on the same um pathway we've been on, just if you could be mindful of in in each of your committees, as John has stated, when you come to council, the other committee members are depending on you from the members of that committee to champion whatever issue is before the council. So we can all do better on all of our parts, including staff and myself. So I appreciate everybody's attention to the matter and and we will try to make it more efficient in the in the future so that you as a decision makers can make your decisions. Okay. Um, all right then. If there's nothing else, make sure I didn't cut anybody off. Any other comments or questions? Here none. Then we'll move on to strategic strategic plan review. Of course, this is a standing um uh committee agenda item. Um I think we kind of already spoke about that in the previous um agenda items, but is there anything specific that council would like to chat about?
Um, I I would because, you know, again, new girl here.
Yeah.
I have been doing, because the arts are a passion of mine, as many as you already know, I have been doing some research and I do have some things. Um but I want to make sure I present them correctly because I have some findings that I have and recommendations. Deb, would it be appropriate to send you what I have and what I'd like council to see?
Sure.
Um before the next meeting so we can make sure it's all public and out there and that kind of thing? Okay, great.
Do you want that to come to council meeting?
I do. I want that to be, when we come to strategic vision, I want something to be there and I want to have the proof and I want to have the pudding and I want to have some things that our people are doing. But I just didn't, I I don't want it just to be, as everyone here has said, oh, my gosh, what's this? And that's what I don't want.
Okay. Yes. And of course, if there's things like that, you know, that you want to um promulgate to the rest of the council, you yourself, you know, when you send it out, you're, you're, you're going to start creating OMA violations if you get responses. But anything sent through staff eliminates that issue. So um because staff can communicate. But anything sent through staff eliminates that issue, so, because staff can communicate with all of you individually and send out a full thing, but blind copy you, so you can't respond to the...
Expect an email, Deb.
All right, anything else on that agenda item? Here or none? How about new business? Any new business?
I have some new business. I'd like to congratulate Director Lambes, who got engaged over the weekend. Congratulations.
What?
Oh, my God. Wow.
I, I did say congratulations earlier, but I had heard about it from a little birdie, so, um, fun times.
Behave.
All right. At this juncture, we need to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation or litigation that is probable or imminent pursuant to Section 2C-11 of the Illinois Opens Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C-11.
Okay, I'll make a motion, oh, I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation or litigation that is probable or imminent pursuant to Section 2C-11 of the Illinois Opens, Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C-11.
I'll second.
All right, we have motion by Hatterline, second by Perkins. Comments, questions? Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Lavelle.
Here.
Hoflick.
Here.
Lancaster.
Still here.
Hold on, hold on, we're not, we're not, we're not taking attendance, we're voting to go to closed session.
Aye or an aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Crete?
Aye.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Flat Miller?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
I'd like to make, are we there?
I want to make sure we've got, um...
Okay, then.
Yeah, waiting for it to...
Mike's on Charlie.
All right, I think we are now live, all right. Item number 10, seeking a motion to come back into open session.
I'll make a motion that we come back into open session.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Anna Marie Flat Miller and Mike Hoflick. Any comments, questions? Here or none? Clerk, call the roll.
Hold on, excuse me, Alderman Hoflick?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Crete?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Flat Miller?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
All ayes.
Thank you very much. Item number 11, to seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Lancaster, second by Perkins.
Do you practice that?
Clerk, call, roll.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you.
I'm staying in the hour.